Good evening, Chair. Calls to order, public hearing for Bill 23-006, amendment to section 26762-F, Development Adjustment Natural Resource District. Counsel, this evening, we're going to start off with Councilman Guthrie and then maybe with Ms. Boisodros.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this is a bill to protect people in our county who buy a single-family home and expect to live in a single-family home district. They pay three, four, five hundred thousand dollars, whatever it is, for a single-family home, and they expect to live in that kind of a district. They don't expect to turn around and somebody come up with a term that all my research can't find anywhere where it's factual, but they come up with a term of natural resource district. And that way, if they do that, they can apply that in an R1 district and then get a bump up from anywhere to thirty to fifty percent to the next building code. Well, there's basically residential, you can build some other codes, but basically in residential, there's four building codes. There's R1, there's R2, R3, and R4. There's plenty of building codes for townhomes. R2, R3, and R4 are all building codes for townhomes. There's only one building code for single-family homes, and that's R1. Now, that was set in supposedly in granite, but, you know, nothing's in granite in politics. It changes every four years. It was that in R1, you could only build single-family homes, but back in 2014 or 15, there was an amendment put in that took an R1 district and changed it that if, in fact, it was part of a natural resource district, then it could be bumped up to thirty to fifty percent into the next criteria, which is then you can mix a bunch of townhomes in with single-family homes and not tell the people who just spent three, four, five hundred thousand for a single-family home that there's a bunch of townhomes coming and built in. I love against townhomes. Me and my wife lived in two of them in our lifetime, and now we live in a single-family home, and we live in a single-family district, and that's what we expect. Now, what I want to show you is the, we put the photo up. According to the county and in their book right here, which is 2022 Land Preservation, Parks and Rec Plan, right here, there's a picture up there. If you see it, it's up there now. That is what the county describes as a natural resource district, and I agree with it a hundred percent. If, in fact, you were going to develop some property in that area, you can't develop in the stream or in around the stream. It has to be far away from that where it's allowed. So consequently, since you can't build there, then you're allowed a bump up to make up for the homes that you can't build there. That's a natural resource district, okay? Now, I want to read in the book, chapter three of the natural resource book from Parks and Rec, and it says, my throat ain't quite cleared up yet. Goals for natural resource conservation. Natural resource lands provide many environmental benefits to citizens in Harford County. Streams, wetlands, floodplains, forests, rare habitats, steep slopes are natural areas that are worthy of preservation, and all these areas are highly at habitat value. Forests can be the most effective land cover for certain areas. Large forest areas that provide hubs and corridors and wildlife often have high wildlife and biodiversity values. These areas are especially important for targeting protection and restoration efforts. And I like this other paragraph. There are also many social benefits to protecting our natural resources lands. By calling something a natural resource, then you want to protect those lands accordingly, okay? And it says, natural resource areas provide citizens outdoor recreation opportunities such as hiking, kayaking, camping, fishing, and bicycling are just a few examples. Mature forests can provide shade and headwater streams and reduce settlement loads. Forests, ripracks, and buffers are important to maintaining and improving water and air quality. Now, I want to show you that, and this development can't, nothing can be done about it because it's already in the process, but I want to show you this, put the next photo up. This is what this builder thinks a natural resource is. That's a natural resource, okay? That's an area where you can have hiking, kayaking, camping, fishing, bicycling, just to name a few. That area there is supposed to be all R1. R1 is supposed to be single-family homes. In that area, three hundred some acres, you're supposed to be able to build the maximum of three hundred single-family homes. But since somehow they stuck a natural resource on this, though there isn't one inch of that land that I can, and I've walked it and looked at it and taken pictures of it, that even come close to what the diagram is or the explanation here in this booklet from Parks and Rec. In this particular development, it's right off 152, if you know where the Southern Police Station is and the chicken place where they sell chicken sandwiches and all that, it's right there. And if you notice, it goes up, it actually goes beyond them trees and down over the other side. And that development, which should be three hundred single-family homes, is changed with the bump up. They build, they're going to build two hundred single-family homes and one hundred and eighty-eight townhomes. And now, also, in the area, I didn't have a picture of it, but the one entrance, and right now I only see one entrance. What happens is, also, let me go back, what happens in a development like this, you go from, when you have about three hundred single-family homes and you multiply by the anticipation of how many cars per household, you're going to have about three, excuse me, over six hundred cars. But when you bump it up and you put in all these townhouses, that six hundred grows to almost a thousand. So right there on 152, which is also already a very high area as far as traffic is concerned, somehow a thousand cars are going to be in there, and somehow they got to come out. And the only exit or entrance I see right now is on 152. Let me put up the next slide. Now, this is the development. And if you look, the yellow marker up to the left, that's Mountain Road, 152. Route 40 is right above that, and the road comes straight down there. You notice that high clump of houses in the lower right-hand corner there, that's crammed one hundred and eighty-eight townhomes in that area. Two hundred single-family homes in the rest, when the area should only provide single-family homes. So this bill, there's nothing we can do about this development because unfortunately it got going before I got back in office. But that's neither here nor there. But the whole subject of this bill, which we won't come up and get voted on tonight, but the whole subject of this bill is to protect a R1 district for citizens of our county who build a single-family home or buy a single-family home in an R1 district. The entrance on this property on 152, there's a big sign there, says, "Coming Soon, Single Family Homes." Guess what? The sign doesn't even mention, doesn't even mention that they're going to build townhomes in the area. People don't even know it. Go in and buy the homes, and they turn around and there's one hundred and eighty-eight single-townhomes in the area. And where in hell all these cars are going to exit, you know, is anybody's guess, but as most I can see, there might be one other entrance. Without a whole any other comments, having Ms. Boyle has some comments also because she has the same thing happening in her district.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Ms. Boisodros?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilman Guthrie. This bill has two aims. It's to reinstate the thirty percent threshold that used to be in the code. It's currently twenty-five percent, and we're aiming to go back to the thirty percent standard as well as to forbid townhomes in the R1 district utilizing the bump up. R1 lots are intended to be larger lots with a larger-scale housing product. Personally, I have concerns with the Evamar project and the intentions of the developer. Property owners should be able to rely upon their zoning and the zoning of adjacent or nearby properties when they buy their land. Developers should not be able to subvert those expectations and reliance by changing lot sizes and utilizing the NRD bump up. Townhomes are not appropriate for any R1-zoned property, and the thirty percent threshold amendment would preserve more natural resource districts and habitat-protection districts in the Chesapeake Bay critical area. This is something I think will be extremely beneficial to Harford County and all the members of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boisodros. Mr. Guthrie, anything else?
No, I'm more than at it, woman.
Mr. Pemben?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few considerations or questions. Mr. Guthrie, Ms. Boisodros, the proposed legislation is not a moratorium or emergency moratorium. It does not prohibit residential development per the designated R1 zoning code. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
In addition, this legislation will not affect this project here because it's already in the pipeline, received development advisory committee hearings, and the site plans have already been submitted on this project here.
That's correct.
Yeah, correct, because this bill is not a moratorium bill. This bill is a bill to prevent anything in the future.
All right. No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pemben. Anyone else? I do know that you have amendments coming forward. We talked about them briefly this afternoon. We'll look at them again when we come back and bring them at the next council meeting. Ms. Dixon, apparently there's a problem with the livestream. I'm getting a couple of text messages on that.
Yes, Mr. President.
And do we have anyone signed up? Do we have anyone signed up for the public?
We do. William Honorato.
Good evening, sir. Name and address.
Good evening. William Honorato. I live at 1803 Falstaff Road in Tudor Manor, right next door to the Evamar project, so that's been near and dear to my heart for the past ten years. I fully support this bill. The issue with the NRD adjustment is that it's an automatic upzone of any property to the next level, and it bypasses the process for an upzone. So there's no council input, there's no input from the citizens, there's no analysis of whether this upzone makes any kind of sense for that particular project. That's just wrong. So it should be more difficult to get this because it's bypassing input from the citizens. So I know this because I live next door to Evamar. It was zoned R1. Our expectation was that we were going to get R1, similar-sized lots, and lo and behold, the plans come out and they've got this bump up to R2 lot sizes. And we find out that the threshold was lowered from thirty percent to twenty-five percent two days before the plans went public to make this qualify. So this is not inconsequential. So if we do the math on the Evamar project, at the end of the day, they're probably, if allowed to go fully through, you're probably looking at about two hundred and forty houses as opposed to maybe a hundred and sixty. So approximately eighty houses is an increase. Now, you're planning a zoning director who's going to tell you, you know, this is for smart growth, and there's all these lofty goals, but the reality is it's all about the money for the developer. Those lots at Evamar, we're going from the developer to the home builder for a hundred and eighty thousand each, a hundred and eighty thousand each times eighty, that's fourteen million dollars for the developer with just the eighty homes additional because of the bump up. And then the home builder, he gets to build eighty additional homes, making another hundred and fifty thousand. Now, the issue for us as citizens, the developer and the home builder, they're all going to retire in Florida with their fourteen million, and we're going to be the ones left, we're going to be the ones left holding the bag. So we got eighty additional homes, results in eight hundred trips per day from a traffic standpoint, put out one at the intersection of 543 and 22, which is already bad. From what I'm hearing from the people in Evamar now, their kids are sitting three to a seat on the bus. We got trailers at the school, and we're going to try to put more houses in by way of this adjustment. So it just doesn't make sense. It should be hard to get, and it certainly shouldn't bestow more benefit to the developers than what would otherwise be entitled to. So I support this fully. There's a secondary issue that we're dealing with this property that I don't have time tonight, but we'll get into it. But thank you. I appreciate this bill. This is a rare bill, actually, that favors us and not developers. I haven't seen it in ten years, a single bill come through from this council that benefits us and not the developers. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
This will, with no more, it looks like someone else signed up. Ms. Flash?
I had her for the agricultural preservation. She signed up for...
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Stephanie Flash, speaking on behalf of Friends of Harford at PO Box 294 Abingdon. As you know, Friends of Harford is an organization that advocates for actions and policies for responsible land use to ensure the quality of life for our Harford County citizens. And protecting the development of the natural resource district is one way that we can all obtain that goal. And I thank you to the four members, the council members, that are introducing this legislation to protect the significant environmental areas and understanding the importance of these areas enough to adjust the zoning code and to improve the guidelines for the use of this land in a non-natural resource district. We believe by prohibiting the townhouses in the R1 district and the thirty percent reset, this helps protect the water quality, it does minimize erosion, protect the wetlands and properties from environmental hazards as simple as the floodwaters, plus the traffic congestion, light pollution, air quality issues, and other hardships from development in Harford County. Friends of Harford supports this bill to prohibit the townhouses in R1 and the thirty percent and encourages the county council to be proactive with measures to preserve these significant and special environmental features in Harford County.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
I have no other speakers, Mr. President.
All right, with no other speakers, this will conclude this public hearing, and we'll take this up at a later date. Thank you. And counsel, if there are no objections, I'd like to open this next public hearing for resolutions 004-23 through 015-23, and I would ask that we allow Mr. Amos to make his presentation on all the properties, and we'll hold our questions to the end. Mr. Amos? Ms. Wilson?
Thank you. County Council, it's a really pleasure to be over here. Most of the time, I only get to come once a year, but it's a great opportunity to share with you the next round of farms to enter our program. It's great to have our treasurer, Mr. Sandless, with us at the table in case there's any questions about revenue coming in, items like that, and projections. And also, I'd like to, as many of you already know, Jen Wilson is a Planner III, just like I am in the Department of Planning and Zoning, and she helps, we work together on the land preservation program, the two of us. I'd also like to commend and thank the Boy Scouts for showing up behind us and also some other agricultural leaders in the community to show support for tonight's presentation and the next twelve farms coming into the program. Appreciate that. Before I start, I'd just like to mention, many times people hear this, I've been doing this for thirty years now, and say, "Bill, why don't you just be real specific?" So I'm going to start off by being really specific to the general layman in the audience and also at home. We're taking agricultural county, Harford County Agricultural Transfer Tax of a half a percent that certainly has increased over time, which is wonderful. And we work with landowners to get applications from them and purchase their development rights in perpetuity. We strip away the ability for them to residentially subdivide their farms or for any owner of that property in perpetuity and also only allow agricultural uses, no commercial, industrial, or institutional uses from that point forward. Most of the time, our settlements, once the county council approves them, takes another three or four months. We require the landowner to come up with an updated survey, and that exactly, we know it's recorded in the courthouse along with a deed of easement in perpetuity. So that's where the funds are going to. It's a one-time deal. We will certainly touch base with the landowner over time, touch base, see what's going on with the property, update it and stuff, but we never have to do this deal again. Those properties are sold, whether it's a year later or twenty or thirty years later, but that restriction always goes with the property and stays in perpetuity. So we'll get started on our PowerPoint. Thank you. Okay, so we wanted to start off with kind of a history of our program, so, and I'll try to get this mic back up, okay? I'll try to get, we wanted to bring kind of a two-step approach of how this program has evolved over time. And we look back at our master plan in Harford County, all the way back, you know, long-term planning, future growth areas, public service, water and sewers areas, and it's updated every seven years. We saw nineteen sixty-nine was our first county plan. In nineteen seventy-seven, we saw the first designation of the development envelope, which has only changed a little bit over time, which is a good thing. And in nineteen eighty-eight, all the success of people wanting to move to our beautiful county, we started hearing and discussions of how Harford County individually could help create our land preservation program. We did fashion it after a state mouth program and other efforts of our own, Senator James had created it down in Annapolis. And in nineteen ninety-three, we followed by the rural plan, actually outlining a PDR program, a possible TDR program, and a mandatory clustering. Sad to say, the full-blown TDR program and clustering provision was never adopted, but our PDR was, and it continues today. It's the thirty-year anniversary. We've preserved over thirty-six thousand acres in that one program, and so that's an average, you could say, of over a thousand acres a year, and we continue that today and bringing those farms to you tonight. In 2016, it was our last Harford Next, and it set a goal of seventy-five thousand acres by 2040, which we continue to work with, and today we're over, right at sixty-two thousand acres currently preserved with all our programs we're going to talk about. We also have a highlight, we put in here a time lapse to really show you the progression of our conservation easement programs over time, and it does include the county program in purple, the orange color is our mouth program, and the light blue is our rural legacy program. At the same time, or actually, I should back up and say before, our own Senator James was doing work in the sixties on how can we come to landowners and create a program at first being donated to set a stage and be able to record a conservation easement on that land and it always be preserved. One of his farms was preserved, he was his first one in November of seventy-seven, followed by Mrs. Michael's property in nineteen seventy-nine, as we all know, Wheel Road and Fountain Green, that three hundred-acre farm was donated easement through the Maryland Environmental Trust. Finally, Senator James was able to keep, create funding through program open space and create the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation, which we call MAF for short. We have some acronyms in our business, and that continues today. And we always send down eight to ten farms every year by July 1st of each deadline and try to compete with all that state money. That's one of our primary purposes first, and then we go after the county money. In nineteen ninety-two, in the previous three years, the money was held off by then William Donald Schaefer to balance the state budget. We had a lot of interest in the easement programs and so forth, therefore, we created our own county program. And the funding mechanism, the half a percent real estate transfer tax, of course, the one percent, half of it going to the program and half going into the capital projects for the schools, school construction. And in 2000, then Governor Glenn Denning created the Rural Legacy Program, and that continues today as well. We're one of the top funded grant recipients each year, and that is designated in the Deer Creek Rural Legacy Area. The Manor Conservancy also has a Rural Legacy Area in their section of the county, which also goes into Baltimore County. Some of the other programs over the years, we've always tried to outreach and get as much funding as possible for all our programs, as we did a Maryland Forest Legacy, federal money through the state down to the Boy Scout camp, and we preserved over six hundred acres at the Boy Scout camp along with our match from the county program, and then tonight we're hoping to finish that match for the rest of the sixteen-hundred-acre property. We also grabbed some USDA Farm and Ranch Protection money over the years. Local land trusts have been doing a great job. Harford Land Trust works with the Army Forces Buffer Program, and as I said, the Manor Conservancy works with the Rural Legacy Program. Our next slide, and we shared this with you, and again, we appreciate meeting with me and Jen in the past couple of weeks, the council members, we greatly appreciate that, shares with you the progress over the years of our different programs. And you see in nineteen ninety-two, we started with our county program. Prior to that, all those easements, over seven thousand five hundred and seventy acres was accomplished through either MAF or the MET program. And over time, as you can see, concluding this past year, we're up to sixty-one thousand seven ninety-one, but we have just recently conducted two or three settlements through the MAF program and getting very close. We just did one through Rural Legacy. So that acreage is right up there with sixty-two thousand acres. So again, what's the land preservation benefits? How does it help the citizens? How does it help the landowners? And how does it help the farming economy? It provides options to landowners to receive equity from their land instead of selling to residential developers. And Dionne, thank you, that was a great lead-in of what we just saw because that's really what it's doing. Before it gets zoned, we're trying to grab it and erase those development rights that's on it now, but remember, once our easements are recorded, they never can rezone, whether it's fifty or a hundred years from now, so it takes that away. In exchange for that, we record a deed in the courthouse assigned to that property in perpetuity, explaining to everyone and all the future buyers that the property can only be used for agricultural purposes.
Bill, excuse me a minute.
Sorry.
Mr. Seaman, why don't you find a seat? Go ahead.
Secondly, it's a master plan tool to limit suburban sprawl in perpetuity. It's a cost-effective tool to limit growing need for government services and be more sustainable. It protects, one of the most important things, it protects vast amounts of agricultural land for agricultural industry viability in perpetuity, and we certainly have seen that, the advances of farms that are preserved and the capital improvements that are put back into them, all the next generations that are coming on board with new and updating farming operations, both at the large-scale agriculture and the value-adding, the smaller-scale agriculture. It's really exciting to see that. And most important for the citizens, it protects the quality of life, open spaces, natural resources for all county residents in perpetuity. We always put this inventory sheet up, and this is our best estimate on planning in the terms of land preservation. We were roughly, as you can see, two hundred and eighty-one thousand acres. We deduct for APG, we deduct for the development envelope, and it's already excluded two big farms, well, a couple of other farms as well that Harford Land Trusts and other organizations have preserved as well. It deducts over seventy-five thousand acres non-ag zoned or developed already land in the ag zoning areas, deducting eleven thousand acres for the government-owned land, and sixty-one, eight forty-seven, almost sixty-two now, for conservation easements leads you with a number of sixteen thousand acres, excuse me, minus an additional sixteen thousand acres with development rights but not meeting county criteria. That leaves us roughly with about twenty-three thousand acres to target for conservation easements, so our work is not done. We continue to work, and even though we have roughly about twenty-eight farms applications to date, we actually got about four, five, six more recently for the next round, so we look forward to working with those landowners. Okay, so the program applicants as of December 1st, when we stopped taking in new applications and moved forward, are twenty-eight farms. Of those twenty-eight farms, we talked with Treasury to see how much was allocated and used last year in the budget process, and we were able to go down to thirteen farms. However, number eight passed, which she certainly had the, you always have the ability to pass... number eight passed, which she certainly had the, you always have the ability to pass, and that landowner certainly wants to come into the next round. And a lot of times, as you know, this is a huge decision. This is something you can't, once you go into, you can't get back out of. So, we're going to discuss the top 12 tonight and go through the process. So, for everybody listening, I hope this helps through the process, understanding the program. We wanted to highlight Alvin, which is our computer program that is built in-house. Bruce Johnson was able to develop that. He actually got a national award for that. It's an automated process of taking all the factors in, including GIS analysis, mapping data, performance calculations, and produces our ranking and evaluation worksheets. It certainly is faster and more accurate, and it certainly helps on our annual auditing process for the program. It's certainly been a big help to have all those in place. Two things we wanted to go over. First is a ranking sheet, because as you know, we never have enough money to pick everybody up that wants to apply the program. There certainly is criteria. As we all know, you have to have a first additional development potential, and then there's soils-size criteria. But in the ranking sheet, as we rank these, this ranking is approved by the county council. It has been tweaked over the past 30 years. Small areas, but important areas. So, today, this is our current ranking, approved ranking sheet. The last change was in 2020. A third of the points are, 100 of the, 100 of the 300 points is a soil productivity score, again, calculated by Alvin with the latest LISA program or the soil productivity score of that farm. It goes into other things like farmland capability, the percentage of cropland and pasture, and the, it gives a reward for the less hydrolic soils currently. Under three, land use capabilities. Looks at development rights, because that is a very important factor. Proximity, this is one of the changes back in 2020 to encourage more people around the development envelope to get into the program. Size, size does matter. Preserving a farm, a 200-acre farm will take just as much time as preserving a 20-acre farm. So, as you know, we do try to cherry pick and go after those big, beautiful, productive farms in our ranking system. Things like productive, protection is a farm next door, already preserved, makes a big impact. Whether the soil conservation plan's applied or not, do they have one, gives assigned points. Ownership, contribution to agriculture, and special conditions. In special conditions, those last two points are assigned by the Ag Preservation Board that reviews all the items and ranking that we do. They, they're the final say on the ranking and the, and the pricing. And to give you an example, if you're a young farmer, you'd probably get, and you can prove that, you get the 10 points. And I know somebody's going to ask me, what's the age of a young farmer? And other things, that pressure, things that, that are coming on might be assigned in those, in that section. Ranking detail. So, this is a summation of our 13 farms, or 12 farms moving on, excuse me, detail. We shared that with you the past couple of weeks as we've been going over these farms. And the areas we've previously talked about, you can see filled in, and we make offers, starting with the highest ranking and move on down until we run out of money. So, we were able to go down to 13, 12 farms this, this time. Okay, so, that's the ranking. The next part is the valuation sheet. You know, how do we pay? Where's that value come at? We use a point system. We were one of the first in the country to come up with a point system. We continue that today, and there's many that have adopted our system, have, of course, tweaked it to their own areas. It is, it is a point system driven on development rates, soil quality, and other considerations of one of those areas if you have a fully implemented soil conservation plan or not. Those points are derived and multiplied by a base multiplication factor, and we're looking at the group of 20 or 30 farms, and looking also each year at, and talking with appraisers, and getting that number, the medium, an acceptable level that's produced. And we try to hit around a 50, 50, 40 to 50% of fair market value of that property minus any improvements. And we get pretty close to that number. To give you an example, the MAF program is around 60, 70% of fair market value minus any improvements. So, we're all, always the discounted one. MAF typically, you always try to have those figure, the, those landowners get the highest amount of money, then us, and then somewhere in between that is rural legacy. So, these, this, once this point system is derived and that formula value is calculated, there's two other caps that play in, that come into play, and it's the lesser of the three. There's a per-acre value cap. That's a figure that no matter what, we won't pay any more than that set price. Currently, $6,500 an acre. That's been in, that has been in place since, for the past three years. We're watching the number of, number, number of applicants and also the market value. And then the third cap is the per-development right value cap. And that's established for particularly in farms that might have already transferred some of their rights, not an average density, and that's a really, a fairer way to cap that. It's not right to, it's not fair to pay them the same amount of money as somebody who has all their rights or average amount of rights. So, we limit that, and you'll see that play, come into play as we go through the individual farms. In a sum, in a summation, before we go to the chart, we wanted to share the limitations. Again, offered based on the lesser of the three calculations, either the formula value, the cap per acre max value, which is continuing to be 6,500 an acre, or the per-development right cap of $100,000 per development right, per parcel, and $50,000 after that. And that's taking effect Senate Bill 236. And then this next slide is a summary of, very similar to the ranking, this is a summary of the value. And as you follow over, we'll see one color for the formula value, one for the per-acre cap, and one for the development right cap. And it's whichever is the less of the three we highlighted in green. You can carry that number over and see if there's a bonus area, incentive area that was adopted back about five, six years ago. Those designated areas, we pay an extra $1,000 per acre, and I think we've already made some discussions how we might improve that to be fairer in the next legislation, you know, coming, you know, we'll talk the next couple of weeks of making some tweaks to the current legislation. As you carry that over, you'll see the final easement offer, and that works out to easement offer per acre. Okay. And again, the payment standards currently, all cash at settlement or a 10- or 20-year IPA. We've able to go 25% cash at settlement, or down to 1% if you, if you want, depending on your capital gains concerns. And again, there's 1,000 cash per acre for the bonus area. I think in the future, whether it's next round or the following round, we'll certainly think about going back to the standard IPA. As interest rates rise, one of the reasons we went to cash was it was hard to lock somebody in for 10 or 20 years at less than 1% interest rate. Now, as it's above 4%, also gives us a lot more buying power. The higher their interest rate, the more buying power we can get, spread that money out. And I think, and Robbie might add on to this, is that, that the, the revenue is, you know, slowing down compared to with what we have been used to the past couple of years. So. Okay, so, we'll get right into the county easement offers. And again, we're going to cover each of the individual 12 properties coming into the program. So, this map is just showing, highlighting the spreading of where these properties are coming into the program, which is good to see that spread throughout the county. And we'll go right into, we are going off the ranking, not the bill numbers, and if that's okay with everybody, that's what we typically are used to. So, Resolution 008-23 is Mrs. Peverly's place, 187.55 acres. That's the ESTAT acreage. It's two parcels. As you know, at the end of the day, prior to settlement, the surveys turned in, and we pay for the surveyed acreage, not what ESTAT says. And they're always typically different. You either get plus or minus. It's a lot to do with technology. Some of these farms were surveyed many, many years ago. That has a, a big play into the fact. We're also adding in each of these farms which council district are in, which was a good recommendations of our meetings with, with all of you. And Mrs. Peverly's place is in Council District E, 615 Shucks Road, Bel Air. 12 development rights, two parcels. The map's really pointing out how close that development envelope is. You see the property is close to the park, next to a MAF easement in orange, and close to several county easements, as well as Mrs. Michael's property, which is one of the first MET-donated easements. So. 168, the, so, the total ranking score is 246.94. It had a really high soil productivity score, 167 acres of crops and pasture land, nine acres established forest, and over 4,600 linear feet of streams to be protected. And finally, besides these beautiful pictures that are up here, is the how we're paying, and this is the lesser of the three, is based on the development right cap value. It works out to roughly a little over $1,050,000. And then on top of that will be a bonus, she's in the bonus area, so it'll be a bonus payment of $1,000 an acre. One thing I forgot to point out, and I know you guys know, is that the acreage in your legislation, we bump it up by 10%. That way, it protects us in case they get more acreage than the ESTAT rig, ESTAT records show, and we don't have to come back to you. But again, we're paying on whatever surveyed acreage. We'll be pretty close to this ESTAT acreage, we feel. But we just want to always put that cushion in. We learned the hard way. I had to come over here two or three times years ago and explain that. So, we said from that point forward, adding 10%. So. Okay, next, and it's really nice to have this property come in, like all of them are. And I must say, I've been talking to Mrs. Peverly for over 30 years to talk her into it, so it's great to have her come into the program, so we thank her. Okay, our second farm, Resolution 5-23. This is another, another great success story. This, this farm was the Cass Farm. It was for sale for the past two years. Many developers were looking at it, and our own Brad Milton, Brad's Produce, as everybody knows, 500 Asbury Road in Churchville, was able to buy it in this past November. So, he's coming in and placing in the program. That will help him pay down his mortgage on the property. It's got 18 development rights, again, 188-plus acres. You can see it located not too far from the Peverly farm. Some, his, his parcel that was carved off that farm originally, where the farm stand is, we used the MAF program years ago. And you can see some other farms around him, the different programs, whether the county or the state program we've used to preserve those farms. So, it's great to have this property come in. Total ranking score, again, pretty high, 237.62, another high soil score, 145 acres of crop and pasture land, and on this farm, it's all crops. 38 acres of forest and over 3,100 linear feet of streams. And finally, he again hit the development right cap value, a little different calculations. As you see the result, it works over almost $1.2 million. And again, he's in the bonus area, so he'll get another $1,000 per acre surveyed acreage. So. Another great success story, Stark Farm, a contract purchaser of Tim and Donna Mule. This is, farm's been for sale on the market for two years, thanks to the, the landowners, the Stark family, and our own Tim Hopkins, Street Hopkins Realty, which is a big, big help in this to get the future owners and all interested people in purchasing the farm to come into the land preservation program. We certainly could have lost this development a lot, even, even. The 218 Cooley Mill Road, it is in District D. As you can see on your map, 21 development rights, and it's backed up by some county easements, Worthington did years ago, and some rural legacy easements as well. It's right off of 155. 150 acres of crops, no pastures, all on cropland, 18 acres of forest, and over 4,800 linear feet of streams to be protected. And finally, for this farm, it shows you that the lesser of the three was $6,500 cap per acre. Okay, our next farm, which we have so many audience, individuals and audiences support, is the conclusion of preserving the rest of the Boy Scout camp up in Broad Creek. We're all familiar that, over the years of all the young individuals that have gone through the camp and the great, great help that has brought to the community and the effort there. It's over 1,000 acres remaining. We're projecting that through ESTAT and GIS. It will have to be surveyed. It's being surveyed as we speak. It's going to be interesting. If any spread, it's going to be this property. It might come back 800, it might come back 900, when you get those ups and downs so much. And so, and it was created in the 30, 20s, 30s, and 40s, so some of those deeds were pretty old. Headquarters is 1929 Susquehanna Road up in Waiford in District D. Seven parcels, over 107 development rights. We tried to show, you know, where it's located up in Hartford County. The green shows the forest legacy money we used years ago to preserve part of it. The blue, I mean, the purple shows the county portion we preserved. What this, what this easement will do is, it requires a survey of all the property except the, already been surveyed by the county program. Then we'll deduct out the forest, forest legacy program, and then that will be based on our payments. Total ranking score at 220. They do have a forest management plan and select harvesting of forest on the Boy Scout camp. That helps with their income. Over, again, over 990 acres of forest and over 25,000 linear feet of streams. And as the photos show, not only the, the forest, but also the lake and many of the activity areas that the scouts enjoy. The lesser of the three was $6,500 per acre, and they are not in a bonus area. And we got some beautiful photos of the camp, of the camp. Our next property is back in Bel Air, Resolution 9-23, Sid Peverly, 72 acres. This is the son of Mrs. Peverly. It's back in District E, 704 Shucks Road. This is right up against the development envelope, which is critical for us to help form a buffer area around the development envelope. It only has one extra development right remaining, which we're going to purchase and erase. Good, good total ranking score of 265 acres of crops, little bit of pasture, eight acres of forest, and over 2,000 linear feet of streams. This is a great example of where our development right cap kicks in. So, we will only pay Mr. Peverly $100,000 to come into the program. But it's very important for us because it limits what, you know, Dionne, you were mentioning in your, the properties that you're concerned about. It won't allow future rezonings in the future, right up against the development envelope. So, it's very important to us to come in. Okay, with that, Resolution 14-23, I'm going to turn it over to Jen. Jen, all yours.
Thank you, Val. Resolution 14-23, this is the Shivers family, 68 acres. This is off of Pool Road in Darlington, District D. You can see on the map, it is adjacent to several preserved properties already. It was basically the hole in the donut there with our preserved properties. There's five development rights on this piece of property. And you can see they have 35 acres of crops, 25 acres of forest, and a total ranking score of 188 points. And within that 25 acres of forest is over 2,000 linear feet of streams. And again, on the map, you can see that it's completely surrounded by other preserved land. And now, we start hitting some farms that are using the formula value to, to be the lesser of the pricing. So, this farm... So this farm with the formula value is six thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars, seventy-five cents per acre. Up next is Resolution eleven dash twenty-three, the Jersey and Angus LLC. This family actually owns, uh, two properties you see tonight, and we're treating them as two separate easements. They're separated by the road. We just designate them simply as which side of the road they're on. So this is the north side, forty-five acres. It's on the north side of Cherry Hill Road at the intersection with Emory Church Road and Street, right there in the middle of District D. And you can see on the map, it backs up to lots of other county easements, and it includes one parcel with three development rights, and then four recorded lots that will be erased, or a total of seven development rights that will be erased with this easement. Uh, another ranking score of a hundred and eighty-eight points, twenty-five acres of cropland, fifteen acres of forest, and a little bit of streams on the property. You can see that nice view along Cherry Hill Road, and this hits the formula value of six thousand four hundred fifty-four dollars, twenty-five cents per acre. Up next is Resolution eleven dash twenty-three, Tommy and Michelle Shireman, forty-two acres. They run Third Way Farm down in Haverty Grace. This is at six oh six Robin Hood Road, and this is District E, right on the edge of District F. It's nice to kind of get down in that area of the county finally, and you can see they are actually within the development envelope. So their farm backs up to the corporate limits of Haverty Grace, and they have another property on the other side of the road that we hope to bring in in a future round. So this property backs up to Chapel Road Park. So even though they are forty-two acres, they're eligible because they're adjacent to the park, and they have three additional development rights. A total ranking score of one hundred seventy-seven points, twenty-six acres of crops and pasture, and fourteen acres of forest, and they're doing some really cool stuff with agroforestry and utilizing the property down there to raise all kinds of, um, different livestock. And the, the animals you've seen throughout the presentation are actually from their farm. And you can see there's Tommy with his sheep. And once again, we hit the formula value, six thousand seven dollars, fifty cents per acre. Up next, we head to the other end of the county with Michael and Tiffany Schlupner, twenty-four acres with Crooked Creek Farm. This is on Grayston Road in Pilesville, so District D, heading towards the Pennsylvania Line. And you can see on the map, they are adjacent to several other county easements. So again, even though they're less than fifty acres, they're eligible because they tie into those other farms. So two additional development rights. The property's actually bisected by the BG&E transmission line that runs through the area. It's an INFI, uh, piece of land that cuts the property in half. And, uh, you can see on the map, they have over eleven hundred linear feet of streams that weave through their property and then cross over the BG&E right of line, right of way and keep going. That's actually Broad Creek, and it is, uh, the property about twelve acres of pasture and twelve acres of forest. So again, the lesser of the three is the formula value with six thousand one hundred sixty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents per acre. Up next, Resolution four dash twenty-three is James and Melissa Taylor, twenty-five acres. This is actually a, uh, repeat from last round. They have some subdivision work that they need to get done, but we're not able to complete it in time for, uh, settlement of, uh, the last round before we hit the deadline, so they're back again. Uh, and luckily, they had to, they had to restart, but luckily, we were able to make them an offer this round. Again, this is Thomas Bridge Road and Street, District D. And again, this is, uh, just down the street from the Jersey and Angus LLC easement that we just saw. It's surrounded by other preserved land, and they will be erasing three recorded lots and consolidating it with a portion, um, other portions of the property. So three development rights being erased. On the aerial photo, you can see the, the lots that are being erased and the portions of the land, uh, being consolidated. Total ranking score of a hundred and seventy-four point ninety-eight points, nineteen acres of cropland, uh, seven acres of forest, and a small portion of streams on this portion of the property. And again, this drains directly into Deer Creek, which you could see on the previous map was just to the south of this property. And for the lesser of the three values was the formula value, six thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty cents per acre. Uh, next is Resolution thirteen dash twenty-three, James Smith, sixty-seven point four-nine acres. This is in, uh, Norrisville, so the other far end of the county. We, we managed to stretch from the, the western edge all the way to the eastern side. Norrisville Road and District D. This is sixty-seven acres with five additional development rights. And again, you can see they are adjacent to some other easements in the area, but there's also a lot of work that could still be done nearby. Total ranking score of a hundred and seventy-four point seven-three points. There is about twenty-four acres of cropland that's being farmed by the family next door, and forty-three acres of woodland. And within the woods, we have over fifteen hundred linear feet of streams. Again, we hit the formula value of five thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty cents per acre. And the last resolution is twelve dash twenty-three, again, the Jersey Angus LLC. This is on the south side of Cherry Hill Road, almost seventy-one acres. Then we are in District D. And once again, they are erasing four currently recorded residential lots and consolidating it with a remainder parcel, or nine total development rights that are being erased. This property is mostly cropland. You can see it's a total score of a hundred and seventy-three points, fifty-eight acres, a, a small portion of ten acres of forest, and thirteen hundred linear feet of streams. And once again, we hit the formula value of five thousand five hundred two dollars and fifty cents per acre. And that is it. We'd be happy to take your questions.
So if I may, um, I gotta say, this is probably the most in-depth, uh, report for Ag Preservation that we've received since I've been on the council. I mean, you've covered everything. I like the fact that you took the time to come over and meet with council members, um, and lay everything out for them individually. And with that, um, council, questions? Mr. Penn?
Thank you, uh, both for being here. It was a, uh, very thorough, uh, presentation, a couple of questions, and you answer them. Mr. Chanlis, thank you for being here. I know over the last few weeks, you kind of met with a number of the council members to kind of explain, this is a lot new to a lot of us, so, uh, it was, uh, appreciative. Because I support the program, and I think it lays the foundation, um, for a careful balance of economic development and agricultural preservation. Uh, one important aspect of the program is it supports property rights, because each of the property owners have made their own decision, uh, to participate in the program. Uh, just the one question I have that wasn't answered, though, um, over the last few months, we have spoken at great lengths about the economic growth of Hartford County. I understand the property tax impact of these farms, uh, produce for the county, uh, which are and will be increasing based on the reassessments, but can you talk about the projected income tax that these farms could have on the county budget going forward?
I'll, I'll be glad to. I, I know we talked briefly, um, but I got this report, uh, thanks to Jason Gally, our senator, uh, through Andy Ness, which came out of Marbitco. Marbitco did a recent study on all the counties agriculturally wise, and the total ag economy activity in Hartford County, including the direct and indirect, in other words, supporting industries to agriculture. And I totaled it up, and I can certainly send you the email, or the, at least the link to Marbitco, so you can see the study. Uh, currently is nine hundred and seventy-two million dollars annually, and over four thousand jobs agricultural industry, yeah, in Hartford County.
So, yeah, to the extent that, um, income is generated and those, uh, individuals earning income, uh, live in the county, they would generate, um, a local income tax which would come to the county. I think the biggest, uh, net economic positive with, um, with agricultural preservation is that there's very limited amount of services that are required. Um, you know, those, those fields don't, don't require schools, they don't require, um, public safety in the same amount. Um, and so, you know, to the extent, while they may not necessarily generate, um, you know, lots of additional, uh, you know, tax revenue versus other, other uses, uh, their amount of services is significantly reduced.
Thank you, Mr. Chanlis.
Thank you, Mr. Penn. Uh, council, anyone else? Mr. Janjordano?
Let me turn my mic on, so I'm not coughing. So, uh, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, thank you for, for coming. Bill, I want to thank you, um, that was, that was the first time that I ever got a chance to come over to your office, sit in the, uh, in that room with the big TV screen, and where we were able to click on the different properties and go through and look at that, which I thought made a world of difference from previous times. And I know we've worked on some other legislation trying to tie this stuff up, but it was really, it was really beneficial to see it on the screen. We went through each of the, each of these different ones on the screen, um, on the big screen, and showing different areas and, and the things you guys were able to click on. If none of my other council people have done that, it's, it's definitely worth coming to you to see that as opposed to you coming to us, um, not, not sure if you can do it in our office. And then, um, and I do want to bring up just the one property, the Stark Farm LLC Multifamily. And I know you mentioned something about commercial and industrial, but we know on that property, and we talked about it, that they're also going to be putting, um, a, uh, contracting office in there of the four acres.
Yes.
So does that, that, so how does that meet with commercial and industrial?
Sure. The, um, when you have a property that's not in land preservation, and as you're going into it, including in your ranking and pricing, you want to exclude a certain acreage out. And we did this, uh, only a few times over the years. We're requiring the survey to survey out whatever they were asking, typically it's four acres, five acres. Uh, that will be held out of the easement. We will not pay that to them. Will not be a residential lot, all the development rates were taken away. It's going to be shown on the recorded plat and the reference in the deed of easement that for, you know, in perpetuity, that four or five acres will be left out of the easement. Uh, their next step would be to come in after they settle with us, to come in, and some have done it before, you know, before they come into the easement program, that's really up to them, um, to get a special exception to allow a contracting business on that property, which is allowed under the zoning code, so.
And I just wanted to make that clear, so that in case anybody saw that and didn't realize that that's what was happening here, that you were pulling out four of the acres, and, and that was possible, in case somebody came back and said, hey, what are, what are they doing? And that's something that you did bring up to myself and, uh, my legislative aide, and I, I don't know if any other council people were aware of that, too. But I just thought that was important, I wanted you to bring that up. So, so I do appreciate that. Uh, and Council President, I have no other, uh, questions, other than I just, uh, as time goes by, I appreciate the program more and more, um, for what it's doing. You know, we know we automatically get the money in, and it's split, and, uh, and I've heard, and I've seen good things, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. Anyone else? Mr. Riley?
Yes, I, uh, I like to see that, in fact, that we did get the Boy Scout camp. I had the privilege of going up there and seeing what they're doing with that camp. It's great for our youth here in Norfolk County, it's money well spent, so I appreciate the Boy Scouts and you working on getting that done. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Mr. Guthrie?
Uh, just to finish up, uh, yes, I appreciate you coming over, even though I had twelve years on the council before, I never saw an in-depth, uh, study, in-depth presentation like that. And, and now I'm, I'm trying to figure out, I got this big poster in my office about land preservation, and I'm figuring out what I'm going to do with it. But I've already got some ideas, because I think I'm going to take it to some of my community meetings, you know, and show them, and, and I'm certainly, they'll, they'll, they'll be appreciative. And, uh, again, I'm, I agree with the scouts, so, uh, when I was a little kid, I went up there, went camping when I was, and they really had dirt there when I was there. And, uh, uh, it was most enjoyable. I enjoyed scouting very much when on my way up. I got up, I got up to a, a first class, and I got, I got about, um, tw- twenty-two or twenty-three Eagles, Eagle, uh, merit badges, but I didn't get, I think, any thirty-something, is it? I didn't quite get there. My, my problem was, I was in a Scouts, in a, in a Catholic church, and, uh, they had what they called the CYO also there. And all of a sudden, I got a little older, I got a little more interested in what they had going on in the CYO, uh, Scouts, so I never got my Eagle badges. Thank you. Thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. And, um, our discussions early on about those maps per districts makes a big difference because you can physically see that preservation is all across the county. It's not in the northern end, it's all across the county.
Well, thank you for that suggestion.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Um, Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
We do, Mr. President. We have two this evening. Kristen Kirkwood, followed by Stephanie Flash.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
My name's Kristen Kirkwood, and I reside at twenty-six oh three Brayden Ball Road in Whitehall. And good evening, council members and Council President Vincenti. I offer my comments tonight as the executive director of the Hartford Land Trust, Hartford's only countywide non-governmental organization dedicated to land preservation. Hartford Land Trust strongly supports the agricultural preservation resolutions presented tonight, but firstly, I want to thank all of the landowners, and especially the Boy Scouts here, I hope you all get a badge for being here this whole time, for preserving, excuse me, their properties. It's really not an easy decision, and we sincerely thank you all. In the United States, we lose roughly two hundred acres of natural land and farmland every hour. Most of the loss is due to low-density residential housing, meaning single-family homes on big lots. And while many would consider that the American dream, it is sort of death by a thousand cuts, when you think about it. Because this type of development, in Hartford County alone, we're projected to lose about ten thousand acres to low-density residential housing development by 2040. This is using up our finite land resources for a very small number of homes that demand a lot of public services and generate very little tax revenue. And as all of the folks here in Perryman know, once that land is gone, we can't get it back. With every acre of land lost to poorly planned development, we wipe out family farms, diminish our connection to nature, destroy valuable wildlife habitats, and rob future generations, like all the Boy Scouts here, of access to that nature. Land preservation in this program specifically is our best tool for addressing some of those problems. We can ensure that our agricultural industry is thriving while also avoiding haphazard sprawl. In addition to the nearly nine hundred and seventy-two million dollars in annual value and the four thousand jobs created in Hartford County from our farms, land preservation also creates a host of other economic opportunity for the county. And that was a good question from Councilman Pennman about economic development. I've actually given Ms. Dixon a, um, an information sheet about all the ways that land preservation is economic development. It's not the contrary to it. As an example, just this week, the Chesapeake Bay Balloon Festival announced its moving to Hartford County. This will bring twenty thousand visitors to the county over just three days in August. The founder of the festival said in his press release, "When we evaluated where the Chesapeake Bay Balloon Festival should be, there really wasn't any question that Hartford County was the answer. The value Hartford places on preserving their agricultural heritage and support for agritourism was a natural fit with our mission. This was a direct result of the investment the county has made in land preservation over the past thirty years." In closing, Hartford Land Trust strongly encourages the council to continue preserving farms and forests, as it's one of the best investments that we can make in our quality of life and the future of Hartford County. Thank you for your time and consideration tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. I don't think Ms. Flash is speaking. I see her shaking her head.
I have no more speakers, Mr. President.
Before I conclude this public hearing, I must say, Ms. Kirkwood, they, we don't have badges for them tonight, but my colleagues and I do have council pins for them tonight, so, um, this will conclude this public hearing on Resolution zero zero four dash twenty-three through fifteen, zero fifteen through twenty-three, uh, and will be taken up at a later date. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you.
We good to roll? Good to roll? Okay. Let's let them clear out first.
The Boy Scouts leaving?
No, they're doing the pledge of allegiance.
Mr. Kearney? We're going to take a slate recess. Good evening, Chair. Calls the order Legislative Session Day 23-010. Tonight, council, we have the great privilege and honor to have Troop 124 with us this evening. We'd like to have all of them come forward and help lead us in the pledge. And I would ask everyone to please join us in standing for the pledge, followed by the opening prayer by Councilwoman Sodles. Just spread right across the dais, fellas.
Keep going. There's a leader right there, I can see that.
If you need to make two rows, make two rows. Just get on down a little further, fellas. On down a little further. There you go. All right, very nice. Whenever you're ready.
Could all scouts in scout uniforms please put their scout salute up? Scout salute? All others, please place your hand over your heart. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, take these with you and pass them around to each of you, okay? Got to keep an eye on you.
I thought they were mine.
No, they weren't yours. It's for these guys. If you run short, I've got a few more here.
If not, I got a few more.
You're good?
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a seat. Ms. Sodles, whenever you're ready.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come here before you today in humility and faith. We ask for your guidance and strength, open our hearts and our eyes to see our community as you would us to see it. Give us the patience and understanding to face all the challenges with grace. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Council may have general consent to move to Item 5 on the agenda and return back to Agenda Item 4 thereafter.
So be it.
Agenda Item 5, consideration of petitions, applications, appointments, and nominations, executive appointments. Deputy Director of Housing and Community Development, Mr. Greg DeWort, may have a motion.
Council President, I move to approve Gregory DeWort as Deputy Director of Housing and Community Development.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. It's moved and seconded to approve Mr. DeWort as Deputy Director for Housing and Community Development. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
There being six votes in affirmative, zero and a negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Public Works Advisory Board, may I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve the new appointments of Stacy Stone, Jacqueline Ludwig, and the reappointments of Linda Susie Comer, Amy DePietro, and Donald Sample.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved and seconded to approve Mr. DeWort as Deputy Director for Housing and Community Development. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
There being six votes in affirmative, zero and a negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Public Works Advisory Board, may I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve the new appointments of Stacy Stone, Jacqueline Ludwig, and the reappointments of Linda Susie Comer, Amy DePietro, and Donald Sample.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved and seconded to approve the appointments to the Public Works Advisory Board. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
There being six votes in affirmative, zero and a negative, the appointments are hereby approved. Are any of the individuals in the audience? Thank you. Could you please stand and be recognized? Thank you. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, may I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve the new appointments of Wesley Branch, Owen Landis Senior, Richard Hicks, Frank Marsden, Lucy Godfrey, Vicki Jones, and Sarah Coleman.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Parks and Rec Advisory Board appointments. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
There being six votes in affirmative, zero and a negative, the appointments are hereby approved. Are any of these individuals in the audience? Please stand and be recognized. Environmental Advisory Board, may I have a motion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Guthrie?
I'd like to make a motion that we separate the incumbents from the new individuals that were nominated.
Counsel, any objection? Okay, Mr. Guthrie. May I have a second?
Second.
Or, excuse me, may I have a motion? Was that a motion?
I already made a motion.
All right, thank you. So, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. It's been moved and seconded to approve the reappointments separate from the new appointments. Is there any discussion? Need to read them. Okay. Mr. Guthrie, could you read the reappointments, please?
The reappointments?
The reappointments.
Okay. Sally LaBazare, you're going to get me, I want to get these names. Dennis Kirkwood, Michael Charlton, Paul Garde, how do you pronounce that title of name?
Garde.
Garde.
Yeah.
Jacqueline Cohen, Daniel Spiker, and Roland Beckman. Second. Somebody.
Is that a motion to approve those reappointments, sir?
Yes. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. I was looking for all the names. I called them out of order.
You did.
Yep. All right, is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Being six in the affirmative, zero and a negative, the appointments are hereby approved. Now, Mr. Guthrie?
Mr. President, I move to approve Veronica Casely for the Environmental Advisory Board.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. It's been moved and seconded to approve Ms. Casely to the Environmental Advisory Board. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Abstain.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
There being five votes in affirmative, one abstention, the appointment is hereby approved. Mr. Guthrie?
I move to approve the Sarah Coleman as for the Environmental Advisory Board.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. It's been moved and seconded to approve Ms. Coleman to the Environmental Advisory Board. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
There being six votes in affirmative, zero and a negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Mr. Guthrie?
Mr. President, I move to approve the appointment of Lynn Faulkner to the Environmental Advisory Board.
I'm sorry? I think you have the wrong name.
Lynn F.A.U.L.K.N.E.R.
Mr. President, if I may, I believe she's listed under the reappointments, Ms. Faulkner and Sally Labear.
So, they are, they are new appointments?
They were new appointments, listed under the new appointments. I'm not sure if their names...
Oh, this list is new.
There is reappointments on my list.
On my list.
Yeah.
Where I get this list.
So, if they're reappointments, they've been approved already, correct?
I think the names that he read out and moved have been approved yet up to this point.
Okay.
They're in the wrong place on my page.
Okay, so...
Council President, I move to approve the new appointments of Sarah Coleman. We're ready to say her Jacqueline Senschel.
Yes. May I have a second on that?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Been moved and seconded to approve, or excuse me, to move or approve the appointment. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Being six votes in affirmative, zero and a negative, Ms. Senschel, how do you pronounce that name, Senschel, is approved. Mr. Guthrie?
That's all I have on my...
Council President, I move to approve the new appointments of Daniel Spiker.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved and seconded to approve Mr. Spiker to the Environmental Advisory Board. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Being six votes in affirmative, zero and a negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Council appointments, Audit Advisory Board, may I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve the new appointment of Jeff Cordelia, Chuck Hunter, and a reappointment of Pam Heckler.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Audit Advisory Board appointments. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
There being six votes in affirmative and zero and a negative, the appointments are hereby approved. And are there any of these individuals in the audience? Or any of the Environmental Advisory Board folks in the audience? Thank you, ma'am. Hartford Living Treasure, may I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve Larson Sayer as Hartford Living Treasure.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. It's been moved and seconded to approve the appointment of Larson Sayer as a Hartford Living Treasure. Are there any comments?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
There being six votes affirmative and zero and a negative, the appointment of Larson Sayer as a Hartford Living Treasure is hereby approved. Presentation of Proclamations, Hartford Living Treasure. Mr. Sayer, can you meet me down front, please, with your family and friends?
Did you read the... I got to read. I can't read. I can't reach these. Not right now.
I wouldn't talk to him like that with a cane in his hand.
Come on now. Come on now. Laurie, come over this way. Mr. Janjordano, whenever you're ready.
Whereas Larson Sayer received the Hartford County Cultural Arts Board recommendation to Hartford County Council for recognition as a Hartford Living Treasure, and whereas Larson has been raising Angus cattle since 1960. He grew up working on the family farm in Thomas Run Valley and raised his family on the Waffle Hill Farm. He began using rotational grazing in the 1980s and held offices with the Maryland Angus Association, Maryland Cattlemen's Association, Maryland Beef Industry Council, American Angus Association, and the Angus Heritage Foundation. And whereas, his many awards include the Environmental Storageship Awards from both the National Cattlemen's Association and the Chesapeake Bay Foundation, land stewardship awarded from the Angus Association, and Conservation Award from Hartford Land Trust. Larson was a board member of Deer Creek Watershed Association and the Hartford County Farm Bureau. He also served as a member of the Hartford County Soil Conservation, Hartford Land Trust, and Churchville Community Planning Council. Now, therefore, we, the County Council of Hartford County, Maryland, on this 21st day of March 2023, do hereby salute Lawrence Sayer, Hartford Living Treasure, and be it further known that his lifetime experiences and contributions to the Hartford County community will provide a permanent record which will recall the past, inform the present, and guide the future of Hartford County, and that his memories and history will be recorded by the Hartford County Public Library Oral Historian and will become a part of the Oral History Collection of the library. I'm hoping it's you.
What are you talking about? I had to tell this fellow here a little story to get him here tonight.
That's for sure.
I've known Grandell for quite some time, and I have always leaned on him for all types of zoning issues and things of that nature. I first met him in the 80s, I guess, when, or actually even before that, but actually got close to him in the 80s when I was appointed to the Churchville Planning Council. And that's what brought me to the county for the very first time, and I got to get close with Grandell here and spend quite a bit of time with him. And I always know when I'm in trouble or if there's a problem, when I get out of my house with a cup of coffee and I walk over to my office and he's sitting in there waiting on me, I know I've got problems, but I didn't mean to get you here on false pretenses.
He needs the one that's got the problem.
But I want to present you this proclamation on behalf of my colleagues and I, and thank uh, and thank you for all of the good things that you've done throughout Hartford County and around the world, actually. Because I've known you, you've been to New Zealand with the Angus Society and others, so we really appreciate all you do and what you stand for.
Thank you very much. But it's been an honor. And they'll be around for quite a while.
You want to say anything else?
No.
I know you're a man of a lot of words.
No, I just thank you all for the opportunity to be here. And we thank the Lord every day for the great environment we have to work with. And for, to be here tonight with the Ag Preservation Program. One of the greatest thing the county's done for, preserve this for the years to come. So these kids have a little local food to eat. But we thank you all.
So I've asked, uh, Mr. Schroes, where are you? Come on up here. So the last time you got presented with, uh, uh, recognition, Mr. Schroes and I were able to do it on the back hill of your farm.
His farm is absolutely beautiful, Waffle Hill Farm and- Larson, I, well first, Pat, I appreciate you calling me today. I, I didn't know this was happening, but when I, my dear friend was, uh-
I didn't either.
It's going to be a living treasure night. I had to make it, but thank you for everything you've done for this county. You're one of our finest stewards. You were around when our land preservation program started in the county. You've been involved with the Hartford Land Trust, um, you know, and it is, it's all about the younger generations and I feel one tapping me on the back. And we want you to grow up and be a strong man, just like your great-grandfather right here was, he is the best of the best. And, um, it means a lot to be here to congratulate you and thanks for all that you're doing and all that you're going to continue to do. When I was on the council, I reached out to you many, many times about many issues. And, uh, I know Pat does too, but we all think a lot of you. Congratulations. I can't think of a better living treasure. Um, and I can't wait to watch the story that, uh, that you're going to tell to the Oral Historian. It's going to be recorded forever and kept forever, so take care, buddy.
Aye, thank you, Chad.
Love you.
So, uh, he and his wife Janie raised Angus steers and some of the finest around for years.
We raised something else.
Yes. Oh, I know that, I know that, but this has got to do with this story. So they came by the house one year at Christmas and I was baking cookies. And, uh, they brought me, or I gave them some cookies, they came back with some ribeye steaks. And about, um, I don't know, a couple of weeks later, Janie said, well, how were those steaks? I said, they were good. She said, good? I would accept excellent. But, uh, just great, great family all the way around. So congratulations.
Well, thank you.
I'm going to ask you to hold that. We're going to get a couple of pictures. Now, doesn't he look like an old jarhead? Yes, he does. Devil dog. The old core. Who, who else? Right here behind you. Councilman Penman. Just a couple of years behind you. Semper Fi. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There you go, right there.
I actually have one for you if you'd like. Oh, right here? That looks good.
Almost didn't get me.
That means a lot. Thanks for calling.
Thank you for coming.
He had me shut down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure, ma'am. Good seeing you. Always, always remember you coming to all these meetings, standing there in a pack.
I used to.
You used to, yeah, you used to. And I said, oh, my goodness, is he going to chew me out at this meeting?
Hey, Pat. You got to figure out how you got this screwed up. I didn't have the names. It's okay, we'll get it. The wrong names. So council, if I may, I'd like to go back to the Environmental Advisory Board. We missed two individuals. It's been brought to my attention. So I'd like to have a motion to approve Sally Labear and Lynn Faulkner as a reappointment, uh, to the Environmental Advisory Board.
Second.
I need a motion.
Council President, I move to approve, approve the reappointment of Sally Labear-
And Lynn Faulkner.
And Lynn Faulkner.
Second. Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Penman. It's been moved in second to approve the appointments of, reappointments of Lynn Faulkner and Sally Labear to the Environmental Advisory Board. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Thank you. There being six votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the appointments are approved. Agenda item number six, special presentations, we have none. Seven, approval of minutes, special legislative session day twenty-three dash zero zero eight, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Public hearing, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Legislative day twenty-three dash zero zero nine, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes stand approved. Agenda item number eight, introduction and consideration of resolutions. Resolution zero twenty-one dash twenty-three, housing administrative plan, veterans preference. May I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve resolution zero twenty-one dash twenty-three.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Penman. Been moved in second to approve resolution zero twenty-one dash twenty-three. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, resolution zero twenty-one dash twenty-three is hereby approved. Mr. Janjordano, please read resolution zero twenty-three dash twenty-three into the record.
Resolution zero twenty-three dash twenty-three, annexation zoning waiver, Gilbert Road, introduced by council member Boyle Sodles and Council President Vincenti. A resolution by county council waiving the five-year waiting period contained in a local government article, section four dash four one six of the Annotated Code of Maryland, to permit property identified as Loxley Manor and commonly known as the Wetlands Golf Course, consisting of approximately two hundred and six point three five acres, annexed by the city of Aberdeen located on Gilbert Road, which is currently zoned, Hartford County's AG Agricultural District zoning classification to be zoned under the city of Aberdeen's Integrated Business District, IBD, and the residential R-one zoning classification. Introduced red first time order posted in a public hearing scheduled for April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, at six thirty P.M. in East Council Chambers.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Janjordano. Can you read bill twenty-three dash zero zero nine into the record, please?
Bill twenty-three dash zero zero nine, solid waste disposal fees, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. An act to repeal and reenact with amendment section one five seven dash two E, fees for deposit of solid waste at a county disposal facility of Article Two, fees of chapter one fifty-seven, license and permits of the Hartford County Code as amended and generally relating to solid waste disposal fees. Introduced red first time order posted in a public hearing scheduled for April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty P.M. in East Council Chambers.
Thank you. Agenda number, number ten, introduction and consideration amendments, we have none. Eleven, call for final reading of bills, bill twenty-three dash zero zero four, Police Accountability Board Amendments. Mr. Penman?
Mr. President, I move to approve bill twenty-three dash zero zero four, Police Accountability Board Amendments.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Been moved in seconded to approve bill twenty-three dash zero zero four. Uh, is there any discussion, gentlemen? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, bill twenty-three dash zero zero four is hereby approved. Enrollment of bills, bill twenty-three dash zero zero four, Police Accountability Board Amendments, is certified as being the test, text finally passed. Thirteen, unfinished business, we have none. Fourteen, new business, Executive Order twenty-three dash zero six, reorganization, division of facilities and operations to, to Department of Public Works. We received an executive order on March sixteenth. This order will become effective per the charter section four thirteen, uh, for reorganization, uh, on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three unless disapproved by vote by this council. Ms. Foley, you want to address that?
So, facilities and operations historically has always been a part of DPW. It was only recently moved out of DPW during the last administration. That was done as a political strategy to move facilities under the control of the Director of Administration. Before that, for over twenty years, facilities fell under the Department of Public Works. There is a fine line between what is considered a facilities project and what is considered a capital project. Therefore, both should be under the same department and director in order to avoid any confusion as to who has responsibility for what project. Maintaining facilities and operations separate from DPW creates confusion, doubled work, missed work, and can lead to extra money being spent. Bottom line, this change is being done to depoliticize the process and organize departments solely in the interest of good governance, not politics.
Thank you, Ms. Foley, and this is something that we do not have to address at this particular time. Agenda number seventeen, comments and input from attending citizens. Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
We do, Mr. President. We have five this evening.
And before you call your first speaker again, just be mindful of your time, uh, and again, respectful of each other. And we will not be speaking to bill twenty-three zero zero five tonight, not until after the vote is taken and following the week after. Call your first speaker.
Jay Ruffinoff, followed by John Malamo.
Call your first speaker again?
Yes, John's up.
Jay Ruffinoff.
Call your second speaker.
John Malamo.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Sir, good evening to you and your colleagues. John P. Malamo, twenty-four oh two Eagleview Drive. This is the story of land use practices, government and governance in Hartford County. The story does not begin once upon a time and it may not end happily ever after. I don't know how the story ends. I'm just the narrator, although I do have some participation. Chapter one, when the code does not fit, change the code. Hartford County Airport Owners Group submitted a plan, the airport layout plan for an airport to the Maryland Aviation Authority. That plan was approved by the MAA on or about twenty-five, March twenty thirteen. The plan included an expanded facility and extensive operation in the Ag District, which was not allowed by the existing zoning code. There's no record that required approval from the Hartford County Zoning Board of Appeals was granted to construct that airport. It was never presented. The owners could not seek approval of the project as an enlargement, extension, or intensification under the existing code. Scope was too large and required access to the Ag District, which was not permitted. The airport owners sought a change to Hartford County zoning code to allow operation as a permitted use by special exception. Bill thirteen four, approved seven, March twenty thirteen, effective six, May twenty thirteen, changed the code with access to the Ag District, albeit with restrictions even more severe than the previous version. Councilman Guthrie, you voted for that bill. After the code had changed, the president of the Hartford County Airport Owners Group is quoted in the local paper on one, March twenty thirteen, stating he asked the county planning and zoning department to, quote, tweak some of the language to let us complete our facility on the current Ag ground, end of quote. Reading from the same article, the Director of Planning and Zoning talked about the bill at the February seventeenth hearing, which did not draw any serious concern from the county council. He said after the hearing, the bill was prompted specifically by the Aldino Airport. This introduces a parable. Institutions, organizations, businesses, all seek to enter, to operate in a stable and consistent environment. When they seek to grow or start up, they look for areas that offer incentives and accommodation. Negative regulations in zoning or studies do not deter such enter, entities from locating in Hartford County. Those entities have observed that the Hartford County Council consistently offers the accommodation they seek. I would spec, that they speculate that they fully understand. Gumdrops, lollipops, and jelly beans produce accommodation in Hartford County. The people they hire to close their deals are many of the same people the council relies upon for advice on zoning and land use. Now tell me, what kind of entities are you attracting? Good night.
Holly McComas, followed by Stacy Stone.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Holly McComas, eighteen twenty-six, Park Beach Drive. I got it right this time. Thank you for having me. The current infrastructure in this county does not support what traffic we have now. Um, I've been saying this for several weeks, um, and I will continue to say it because it's a disaster. Maryland State Police, as well as Hartford County Sheriff's Office, have both told us they cannot uphold the law because the current infrastructure does not allow them to have that ability. Tractor trailers are a concern of mine. Um, they have no place to go. They line up on the roads. We did a traffic survey in our area. Ninety-three, sorry, ninety-three percent of those surveyed do not feel safe driving on our roads. Eighty-seven percent have changed their driving habits. Sixty-nine percent do not feel the traffic at the circle of Old Philadelphia Road and Perryman Road can handle the traffic as it is now. Ninety-four percent have trouble with the yield from Spisusha Road onto Perryman Road. Ninety-five percent have difficulties making a left onto Spisusha Road from Perryman Road. Sixty-eight percent think Canning House Road is not wide enough for the current traffic situation. Although we don't want that change because being a little more narrow slows traffic down. I was almost driven off that road two days ago. A truck was not paying attention, caved over on my lane. You, you take a deep breath, you say a prayer, you blast your horn, and hope they look up from their distracted driving to, to save your life. Eighty-five percent think the bridge of Clubhouse Road connecting the Perryman Lake Preserve to the Bush River is not safe. Ninety-six percent feel the intersection at Woodley Road and East Michaelsville Road is not safe. Our infrastructure is not safe. Please, please, look into our infrastructure before anything else is built. This is a matter of our life and yours and your families and your, your loved ones. Your mother, your father, your wife, your husband, your children. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Um, my name is Stacy Stone, twenty-one oh six Park Beach Drive. I am here this evening to talk about traffic safety. Um, you may have heard last night there was a fatal accident involving a tractor trailer and a bicycle on short lane Route forty in Aberdeen. That tragedy, um, hit home a bit. This is some, an acquaintance of my mother. My mother reaches out to people that are kind of down on their luck and helps them out. And she had helped this gentleman, um, previously, so that really, um, hit home. So really, as, as I have been saying for well over a year now, it's, it, the traffic is not safe. I wanted to, um, kind of point out or reiterate that a, a re, a part of the reason why things are not that safe in Perryman and along Perryman Road is the traffic impact studies. Uh, the, the knowledge that was gained over a course of years was not really applied to those traffic impact studies. So some of that traffic is less than, um, the reality. We were able to get that rectified with this new one that we're looking at. But in reality, there is twelve million square feet of warehouse space where the, the truck, truck traffic is not, um, estimated accurately. And we see it, we see that every day. State Highway was out there this evening, or that this week for the last couple of days with one lane closed and we had a fifty-har and tractor trailer back up, you know, lasting miles having that lane closed. Should something happen on our one-way-in-and-one-way-out road, what are we going to do? We've experienced road, complete road closures in the past in Perryman and we were stuck and people couldn't get home. It's not a safe situation out there. I, I would like to, um, reach out to the council and, and ask you, um, maybe to help me a bit in communicating with State Highway and the county and, um, the seat of Aberdeen to get some changes made. Some relatively inexpensively, some are going to be much more expensive. But we want to see these things made before any additional truck traffic is added there. And I just ask for you to take that in consideration and, and, um, you know, help facilitate that, so, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our last speaker this evening is Ron Stucinski. Our last speaker this evening is Ron Stucinski.
Name and address, please.
Good evening. Ron Stucinski, three nineteen Marina Avenue, Aberdeen, Maryland. Pat, I wanted to ask you before we started, are we definitely doing addresses, or how did you figure?
We're doing addresses. I've addressed that too from last week, so.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Name and address.
Okay, thank you. Drag it four minutes, I guess. I wanted to speak a little bit about last week's meeting, but I guess that's what you don't want me to do, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. But I did want to give a shout out to Mr. Bloomquist, who mentioned a Supreme Court's ruling in two thousand and two, the Lake Tahoe Fifth Amendment case, Lake Tahoe. It's actually, my fiancee is in mind, favorite place on earth to go. In April, we will actually be taking our, we believe, our thirtieth, thirty-second trip there, and we're getting married there in July. If you guys have a chance to get out there, I highly recommend it. It really is heaven on earth.
Are you inviting us to your wedding?
Slow down. We're already having enough problems with that.
Made a break.
I just want to give my personal, like, non-political advice, and this is just for me. Just be yourselves up there. Be what you're elected to do under our Hartford County Charter and our code. Don't just read what others may write for you to read or say what they tell you to say. It's, it's not a good look, and it's, it's obvious when things happen in this room to a lot of people. Do and say what's right for Hartford County residents that, that sit up, that sit here, and also the ones that you sit up there to, to have a voice to represent. So tonight, myself, my neighbors, and the rest of Hartford County will wait patiently for discussion on what last week was. I mean, I don't see a reason why we'd have a, a situation with working with each other and making this happen, considering that we all work together, and you guys work for us and with us. And I also want to reiterate what Holly and Stacy were saying about our safety. This, this month, in March, we've had three helicopters land on Route forty, or Lisbee School, and three fatalities in our area. One was a cement truck. Last night was a bicyclist, and I'm not, I'm honestly not sure what the third was, but it is dangerous, and we do need help out there. I think actually a couple of people last week that were on the other side of the fence actually said the roads in Perryman do need to be looked at. It's been quite a long time, so. Thank you all for everything. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Agenda item sixteen, business from council members.
Good evening, everyone. This week, I had the pleasure of touring the Lyra Dendrian Mansion and meeting with Arda McLune, the president of the Lyra Dungeon Foundation. I was able to learn more about their capital campaign to raise one hundred and fifty thousand for the museum. Currently, the museum room is a series of unlabeled photographs, which tell the story of the mansion and the people that lived in it. It was very interesting, and they plan on including both indoor and outdoor labeled photo panels, artifact displays, audio content, and I was able to review the design plan, and I was very impressed with that. They're celebrating one hundred and twenty-five years, and they plan on having a summer swallray to raise the money for the new museum, and I will keep you posted on that. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. Mr. Riley.
Yeah, just two things. First off, congratulations to the two newest Eagle Scouts, Aiden Porter and Jeremy Webb from Troop Two-Sixty-Five of Madonna. I had the privilege of celebrating with them their Court of Honor on Sunday, and also we're getting a lot of unemployment claims that are coming into my office, so if you have any of those, no matter where you are in the county, we got to contact, and we've been able to straighten out about four or five of them, so just let me know. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Mr. Janjordano.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to thank Deborah Judge today and Eric Redford. We had a meeting with the, with her about the upcoming school budget, so just appreciate having the chance to sit down and talk with her. Also want to thank John Resline and Dustin and Lillian over at the.
Health Department.
Health Department, and we did two inspections this past week. They both went really well. It was good to be there to observe what they're doing. One was a brand-new facility, and one was opening, reopening of another facility, so I, I do appreciate them. Going to look at some legislation to help them support citations that they give out to existing facilities that then don't follow up on anything, so it's something I think we're going to sit down with one or two of them and see if we can look at doing something to make sure that these restaurants are taken care of up to shape, that they're compliant with things that need to be done, pest controls, other, other safety issues, so look forward to that. And then working with Charlie, we found out that the sheriff deputies can issue tickets in fire lanes, and I think going to get something from Charlie that we can then send over to sheriff's office so that they can start issuing tickets for people that are parked in the fire lanes. So I do appreciate Charlie looking into that and finding out that we're, we're okay with doing that. So thank you, thank you, Charlie, for that, and that's all I have, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. Mr. Pennman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Happy report on the signature petition for the term limit was reviewed by the Board of Election and approved, so we'll be starting to collect those signatures very soon. In addition, I also want to speak on supporting critical funding needed for the state's attorney's office to maintain a proficient body-worn camera program. I know we are moving into the budget process, and hopefully the essential funds will be made available. With the new requirements and mandates added by the Maryland State Legislature, it's more difficult than ever to keep our community safe, whether it's Hartford County Sheriff's Office, Central Precinct, or Training Center, or the resources needed for the state's attorney's office. We need to help them be effective. I campaigned on supporting public safety, and I will continue to do so on every opportunity. With that, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Mr. Guthrie.
Thank you, Mr. President. First up, I, I thank the council members and all our staff. Sent me my little care package home when I'm sitting there recuperating with this stripped throat. I don't know if you've ever had it, but I don't recommend it, and I don't wish it on. Well, there might be a few, and I may wish it on, but I'm finally coming down off of it, but it literally laid me up about eight, ten days, so it, it was, but the care package got good with the chicken noodle soup and the chocolate doughnuts, which were really chocolate chip doughnuts, and that was very good. I've never seen that before, but I like to thank everybody. Also, a couple of things. This, this is, this is kind of cute. I'm going to, even though I might be embarrassed with it, I'm going to tell it anyway. The Edgewood Elementary School had their annual career day. That's when they get, they get dozens of people who come from all walks of life to go to the school and sit down at, at a table and have all the kids come out, and they go from table to table, pick up literature on, on possible careers they might do in the future. And so they asked me to come, since it's my district, and they wanted me to, to tell about the council and about elected, being a common elected official and that. So, so I did. I bought lots of stuff to give out, and also, I was sitting there, and there was about a eighth or ninth, eight or nine-year-old young man come up, and he's sitting there, and I'm talking to him again, passing, talking about the copper mine fields that were across the street, and he's just kind of kept looking at me at my forehead, you know? And I said, and then he finally said, sir, can, can I ask you something? I said, sure, ask me anything you want. He says, well, he says, you won't get mad at me? I said, no, I won't get mad at you. He says, well, what is all that space we put all that hair on top of your head? And he had the nice crop of bushy black hair, you know, that, that anybody would be jealous of, and I said, son, let me tell you this. So you go home and look in the mirror and look at how many hair you got. I says, and when you get my age, because I won't be around, but when you get my age, let me know if you still got it. So, I thought it was cute. We received a request for volunteers needed for, to update the new Hope Outreach Ministry. They've been blessed with a larger space operation, but they need Hope, help and, and Hope to reopen it, so they can get open early summer of twenty twenty-three. Individual and groups are welcome to volunteer. They need lots of volunteers. If you, if you can, email Jackie McNally, and her email address is jackymc117@gmail.com. Also, I talked about the copper mine fields, that they are now, finally, after all these years, they are finally in full construction. I've been over there a couple of times already, and they got lots of heavy equipment over there. That's where they're going to be building eight sports fields. They're into it pretty good. That's the same copper miner, a company who is investing, who want to buy the Belair Athletic Club. They've been very good people to work with. We've had myself and a number of council members up here, Eric Green, Pat, have met with the people and the heads of it, and they are very cooperative, so I think we're going to be very lucky when that gets full operation. It's going to bring a lot of guests and people into our county. They're estimated that when they get that full, full bore with games coming in, they, they bring teams from all over, you know, different, the state and other states, and they said they expect that they'll have something like six thousand people come on a weekend. No, no, per Saturday and six thousand more on a Sunday. So we're, we're looking forward. Also, Edgewood Boys and Girls Club, something we've been working on for a few years, and we're, we're finally having some results, are putting in a new roof on the, the, the club and installing some new flooring, so that's going to look real good. And that's right there, looking right at these fields, that there's a lot going over there. Also, I'd like to ask everybody and, and council members and all about possibly a, a bill we might be interested in, we'd like to get inputs on it, and you've probably seen it already around some different counties. Ballmer County has done it, Ballmer City's done it, two other counties have done it, and they've put a ban on plastic bags. Now, it's a controversial subject without question, but if you look at these plastic bags, and if you look at this, there's an area in the Pacific Ocean where because of tides and, and everything and the way the water runs, it, it pushes everything into one big massive collection of plastic junk. And right now, that, Google it, do yourself a favor, Google, and you'll see what I'm talking about. That, that, that collection of junk is the size of the state of Rhode Island, and that's all from bottles and glass cups and stuffs, and that's what we're doing to our, 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 economy, I mean, our country and our, our world, so we need to think about it. It's, there's different phases of it, and phase it in over, you know, six months, nine months, maybe a year, but I think, I think we ought to think about it, so. Let us know your feelings on it. Email us, you know how to get ahold of us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. If I may, real quick, touched on it just a few minutes ago, but during the public hearing last week with fifty-some speakers, did not catch all of the addresses as some others did. It was brought to my attention. My staff made phone calls today, got all of the addresses on file as they're supposed to be, so thanks for bringing that to my attention. Also, I had a chance to talk with Ms. Dixon today and our IT department, George, they have assured us that the closed captioning for council is actually almost ready to go as we speak tonight. They were actually working on it again today, and it's just not quite there, so, but it is very, very close to being on, on live, so. We had an opportunity to attend several different events this week. Yesterday morning, I had the, the honor and pleasure to join the county executive and Matt Scales from Visit Hartford and others at the Cedar Lane Sports Facility to promote the upcoming Chesapeake Balloon Festival, as Ms. Kirkwood spoke about earlier tonight. It's going to be taking place in August, I think August fourth through sixth. This is the seventh year for that event. This is the first time it'll be in Hartford County. Last year, it was in Talbot County, and looking forward to that. My understanding is it could bring as many as twenty-five thousand people to the county for those three days and, and help all sorts of pieces of economic development. We also, Councilman Pennman and I, attended the Hartford County Leading Women Awards Event. It's very nice, a lot of young women. We had the opportunity this afternoon to take photos with three of the recipients today here in the council chambers, was glad to do that. We also attended the Army Alliance Breakfast, or Annual Meeting, I guess I should say. Several of us did, in fact, I think all of us did practically. So as a part of that event, they recognized their twenty-twenty-three Defense Community Champion, and they honored, actually, Councilman, or Curtis Beulah, and with his efforts with the Alfred B. Hilton Organization and also the colored troops, so I was very well done. Outstanding event, and I was honored and pleased to be there. Some sad news today. Jeanie and I wish to express our deepest condolences to the Lauder and Carrery families from Harvard Grace and their friends due to the sudden passing of Margaret Lauder. Personally, I've had the honor and privilege to know Margaret for many, many years, and she was a very loving and caring individual, as was her mother and father and all, all of her family. She will be sorely missed, and I'd ask you all to keep you, keep her, or keep her in your thoughts and prayers, or keep them in their thoughts and prayers, so I want to thank you for that, and with that, nothing else, we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.